Good evening. I'd like to call the City of North Augusta Special Call City Council Meeting for February the 27th, 2023 to order. This is not a regular city council meeting, so we are going to basically besides a roll call, so we can have documentation that who's here. We are going to be voting on one item of new business. We will then, I will then adjourn the meeting, and then I will open up the study session that will follow. So with that being said, I'd like to call to order, I mean roll call, starting from my left for the record.
Eric Pressnell.
David McGee.
Pat Carpenter.
Britton Williams.
Bob Brooks.
Jennifer McCauley.
Kevin Tool.
Okay, under new business, we're looking at Resolution 2023-09, Resolution approving financing terms for the financing vehicles and equipment. Do you have a motion to approve this resolution? Ms. McCauley, Ms. Carpenter, thank you. Anything you'd like to share about this, Ms. Clifford?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So this is an annual drill we go through, which is for the advertisement for banks to participate in the lease purchase program for the City of North Augusta. We go through the city's procurement process. We put it out on the bid page for banks to participate and to give us their best loan rates. And we use the lease purchase program for purchasing. It's almost like a regular car lease. So for things like the Chevy Towels we use for our public safety vehicles and other light duty vehicles, and sometimes larger duty vehicles, we procure using this lease purchase, which at the end of the day, you're paying basically interest on these items, but you still own that equipment at the end of the term of the lease purchase. So we went through this process, and the Bank of America came out with the best rate to not exceed 3.5148% for that lease rate, which is a competitive lease rate, still higher than last year. And depending on how the Federal Reserve moves their market rates through the next year, we may see higher rates in the future. But for this year, this is a good rate for us to get. And so our recommendation is for the council to consider this and to approve this for our lease purchase program for this calendar year.
And this will give us the flexibility to use it on a number of items?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
It's not a specific fleet of cars this is going to be for any, anything we're going to be using?
Anything that we can purchase through the budget cycle. So this doesn't allow us to borrow beyond what has already been apportioned by the council for within the budget. But yes, we can use it for a variety of city requirements.
Okay. Jim?
The, reading on the actual resolution, it says not to exceed 1.662 million. Is that generally what we spend every year on vehicles, or is that just something to lock us in?
I believe that's the maximum amount we have budgeted for equipment. I can't accurately describe for you today unless Lynda can, on how much we've spent in previous years, but Lynda is going to bail me out here.
So when we do the budget every year, we have those certain specific items that have been requested and approved in the budget that we do with lease purchase, and they're identified every year. So that number does change from year to year, depending on what we have budgeted for the year. So according to the 22 budget, what we budgeted, and I think what the not to exceed amount may be a little bit less because we had a few items that came in well under budget. So, but that is where that not to exceed number comes from. So it's budgeted every year.
I'm just curious, is Bank of America spelled B-A-N-C? Is that a subsidiary of Nations Bank? Because they changed it. Is that just something they've kept going like that?
I don't have the answer to that. But we have used them, I think, for our 2020 year.
That's their lease, something with a C. Okay, I just curious. Okay. I should have asked the banker here. Thanks, Kevin. All right. Any other questions for Jim?
All right.
Okay. Are there any citizen comments? Okay. Any council discussion? Okay, hear none. I will ask for a vote, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, the special call meeting will be adjourned. I'd like to open up the study session for the North Augusta City Council for February 27th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our city administrator, Mr. Jim Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we'll be going through tonight on the study session is three items for consideration. The first being the review of next week's council's agenda, second item being department details from our department directors, and lastly, mayor's matters. And today's mayor's matters will be a review of the Rucker policy update as directed by council at a previous engagement. So with that, I'll go ahead and write into our agenda. So moving into attachment one, looking at old business, item number five, economic development, ordinance number 2023-01, to authorize the city to enter into a second amendment to the master development agreement of March 15th, 2017, for North Augusta Riverside Village, second reading. I have no additional information other than what was provided in the previous study session and also through Greenstone's presentation, but the recommendation from staff remains that we believe would still be advantageous to extend the MDA for one more year. And this will be back in front of council if approved in the next January, February timeframe as well. So I'll pause for any questions on that one. Hearing none, I'll move to item number six, our engineering and public works. This is ordinance number 2023-02, authorizing a restructuring of personnel for the Department of Streets and Drains, subsequent to department vacancies resulting from retirements and resignations, second reading. So again, Tom Zeiser is our director of public works, I believe, explained during a previous study session about the restructuring within that department, which is a revenue neutral discussion for this year. And so ultimately, what that allows is for future succession planning in the department, so that if we lose a senior leader in that organization, you've got the pyramid structure, if you will, to be able to move somebody up into a more senior level in the management. And I'll pause for any questions Hearing none, we'll go into new business. And Rachel will bail me out if I do this wrong, or Tommy, since he's here as well. So what you have before you, and I'll kind of bundle this, items seven through 11 are all single parcel annexations. So this is, covers ordinance number 2023-04, 05, 06, 07, as far as annexations. And this is changing the corporate limits of the City of North Augusta by accepting the petition requesting annexation by the landowners. And in the first one, dash four, plus or minus 0.29 acres of property located on Gentry Lane and owned by Adams Brothers LLC, first reading. Also, ordinance number 2023-06 and 07 are also annexation requests by Adams Brothers at 0.39 acres and 0.24 acres respectively, with the only other separate owner being the ordinance number 2023-05, annexation for property on East Buena Vista owned by Lawrence and Karen Graham. So on your maps, you can see under exhibits A, what the properties are listed as, or what their location are. And so to orient the council and our citizenry, if you look at East Buena Vista Avenue, if you're coming from City Hall and going down Buena Vista, past the Public Safety Headquarters, right before you get to Martin Town Road and in the vicinity of the BTC complex, there is a handful of properties that are there on the right-hand side of Buena Vista that are in the county, not in the city limits. There is some ongoing development that is occurring at, done those lots for residential and also potentially commercial. And so ultimately, we've been approached by the landowners that have sought to annex into the city. So this is not a forced annexation or eminent domain request. This is at the request of the landowners, so they can gain city services, specifically utilities, to be able to come inside the city limits.
So when you, that's basically going up the hill, they're building three of those townhomes, I mean three houses there. That's, that makes up these, basically these lots here?
I believe so.
Or is anything else?
Tommy has reminded me that the commercial is actually across the street, not on the same side. So residential is on one side of the street, and there's commercial on the other side.
Quick question. How, how does this affect, if we vote them into the city limits before they're done and have their CO, would Aiken County still finish up with the inspections, or would be turned over to our inspectors? Because it doesn't look like they're quite ready for a CO, just so if this passes and the...
Luckily, I have all the subject matter experts in the row right behind me, between Tommy and Tom, and maybe one of them can answer that.
And that's not a conflict. I just want to make sure if this got passed before they, you know, technically they're in the city, but we're having the county doing the inspections. I don't think that'll be an issue. It's just something I thought about.
And what about the people that live down the road on Gentry? They, is it just these properties? Now, is anybody bought the houses yet, or they, I know they're still being built. So is it the person who's building that's requesting the annexation?
The request is from the developer at this point in time, councilwoman.
But that doesn't affect the other people down the road there on Gentry Lane?
It's property value, though.
Huh?
It's property value, though.
No, ma'am. We have not received any requests from those citizens. And again, as a matter of course, within the city, we're not looking to annex properties unless they are approaching us from a service perspective.
And I presume they knew about this annexation. I mean, I have little friends down through there, and just be sure I don't want anything to happen to them, you know, with their property.
Well, the annexation has no impact on anybody except the ones that have requested it. And I did notice, and, and we've got them in the correct order, because in order to get several of the pieces, we have to take the ones that are closer to the city limits to get them contiguous. And that's in the order that you all have placed them on the agenda.
That's correct. If we had reversed order, you'd be trying to annex a piece of property that's not contiguous to the city. So by passing the first ordinance, that allows you to pull in the subsequent ones.
Good point.
So that's a good way to remind the council, the attorney's ear, is that yes, it's, it's a contiguous block, so it's hard to approve some, but not all. If, and if you had an inclination to do it, so you'd have to look at the map and see which ones you'd want to do. But our recommendation from the staff is that we would integrate all of these into the city and approve the annexations.
Okay.
What do you think it, it would be wise to ask the other homeowners who are not in city limits?
Well, if they want to do that later, they can request.
That's on their own, okay.
Yeah.
So I know it was a bit of a discussion, but that's, there really is, unless there's a specific deep dive on any of these, that really covers items under new business, items seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. So those are those parcels associated with this annexation there off East Buena Vista.
Real, real quick, I know one of them is actually on Buena Vista, the one that's on GC. Is that, is that the old Monaco's Fish Store? Is that that property that's right next to the abandoned liquor store, right at the city limit signs?
I don't have the historical knowledge on that, councilman. Maybe Kelly or somebody else does.
Kevin?
It, it just, yeah.
It's, it's right next to the city limit sign. They wanted to come into city limits for water.
That's the one, they got like a little antique shop or something out back.
It's actually a second location of Ten Pennies Cottage.
Okay.
Located downtown.
I used to race RC cars there 30 some odd years ago.
There is a separate parcel just behind the antiques store that is not coming in, and they do a similar type of business still, is my understanding.
Thanks.
Subject to any questions on those, I'll move to item number 12. So we have this on here as a placeholder. We have ordinance number 2023-08, which is the North Augusta City Rucker Ordinance, first reading. But I would say is based on the guidance that we get from council this evening, is going to drive the formation of that ordinance. We'll have to go through legal review. So ultimately, I don't believe that's going to make the agenda for the following week, but we'll wait to see what we get from the study session this evening to drive our way forward on what that ordinance will look like. I would tell you that, you know, the, not skip too far ahead, that certainly the staff recommendation is that we take this out of the policy realm and put it into an ordinance, the flavor of which will be in debate tonight. And then the next item we have is Resolution number 2023-10, Resolution to enter into lease agreement with North Augusta Chamber of Commerce. Again, I think this may end up getting slid to the next city council meeting. So Kelly Azier is helping us come up with a legal agreement, but that legal agreement still needs to be reviewed by the North Augusta Chambers Board of Directors. So in order to do proper staffing and not jam it in there, I suspect what you'll see is this will be ready for primetime at the next council meeting, and everybody will have seen it by that point in time. And then I have one add, and Kelly could hopefully help me out with this one, but I think we have additional resolution that we don't have a draft here for tonight, but wanted to give at least a verbal update, and we'll have that in for the next council review for agenda. I'll turn it to Kelly for this one.
Yeah, we were approached by Donnie Thompson, DWT Properties, related to the conservation easement that we accepted some years ago. And it ends up that there was a mistake made in the acreage. The plat that they used was accurate. The acreage was indicating there was about eight to 10 acres more than what there actually was there. And they are just requesting to do a corrected deed of easement. This has nothing to do with us, with the property we purchased or anything. This was the easement conservation thing that they gave before. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a little piece, I think they've got the house and whatever on it. And when they put the acreage down, they used that acreage included, but actually the plat they referred to showed the proper acreage. But in order to do this properly, council by resolution accepted that grant of that conservation easement. So in order for Mr. Clifford to be able to sign the corrected deed, you all would have to authorize that also.
Thanks, Kelly. Subject to any other questions from council, that would conclude the first item of our study session, which is the gender review.
Right here.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and maybe I wasn't listening to what you were saying a minute ago. On the record, because I didn't know, we have several Rucker young men out here, and women.
We're going to do that, we're talking, we're going to do that next.
That's why I'm saying, what, did you say we're doing that next?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay. All right, okay. Because I just want them to hear the discussion.
Subject to any additional comments, we'll go ahead into department details, and leading us today will be Lynda Wayne.
Good evening, mayor and council. Our Cycle Two disconnect will be Wednesday and Thursday this week, March 1st and 2nd. And then we will have a due date for our Cycle One customers on Monday, March 6th. And currently, the annual financial audit is underway. Majority of the onsite field work should be completed this week. And that's all I have, unless y'all have anything for me.
Next up will be Public Services, James Sutton.
Hi. Just to go back and give an overview on the Bradleyville Drive Clay Pit Road Water Line Extension. Utility technicians completed installation of 1,400 feet to connect it to two mains between Bradleyville and Clay Pit Road for the purpose of providing better flow for fire system testing and fire protection to the area. The system has been complete, pressure tested, water quality samples, and placed into service. It did increase the fire flow within the area, and also the pressures increased by 40 pounds, went from 25 to 60. And that's a good benefit for the surrounding area of Leonhurst, Cresslin, well, not Leonhurst, I'm sorry, Cresslin and the Bradleyville Road area. Any questions about that project? Moving on, update on the material recovery facility building construction. Right now, the contractor's completed the rear wall installation, the left side wall, and he's got 50% of the roof installed at this time. And we anticipate that they will start the electrical work here sometime next week. So, and we're moving, getting close, but we still have a lot of work to do to finish it up.
I have one question for you. On the Bergen Road lift station, what's the completion date for that?
Bergen Road?
Yeah, Bergen and Martin Town. Yeah. It's a pump station.
Oh, the Clay, Clay Street?
No.
No?
It's where, it's at the traffic light on Bergen Road and Martin Town Road.
You talking about Willowick Lift Station?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
The completion date?
Yes.
Well, we're doing work down there, but you know, it's an age station. We put in a new vault system around one of the pump houses.
Yeah, we saw, we saw the pictures of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I got you. We went in and we have below ground pit pumps.
Yeah.
And we had a contractor come in and construct a new concrete housing, or cast-in-place concrete structure that was placed around those, one of the pump systems.
Okay, just curious.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks, you said new station. It's been there for a few minutes. I was...
That's okay. It's my mistake, not yours.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you, James.
Next up, Tommy Paradise from Planning and Development.
Yes, sir. With the BZA, we'll be meeting next Tuesday night, and the Planning Commission has completed their review of the development code rewrite, and has pushed that out for public comment. It is on the website now. In fact, I got a comment this afternoon. And the Planning Commission should be taking that up at a public hearing at their next meeting, March 15th.
Next up, Chief Thomas for Public Safety.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you again for the attendance and the groundbreaking on Friday. Very successful, had a, had a great turnout and a lot of good coverage. Our annual physicals for all officers begin this week. This is the first part of our, our physicals, so we'll, we'll have another part to finish, but hopefully we can get everybody through that. And then this, next month, in March, the 19th through the 23rd, Kalia will be on site. Mr. Mayor, I think Lieutenant Johnson contacted you.
Yep, on my calendar.
On the calendar, as well as Mr. Clifford, to talk to those folks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Next up, Rick Meyer from PRT.
Okay, spring sports evaluations begin tonight at Riverview Park, and this is our last call to the community. For anybody who wants to register, as we don't want the leagues to close out without anybody getting there, a young person signed up for baseball, softball, or soccer. My number two item is a reminder to our community to please take the opportunity to participate in our PRT Master Plan Survey that is available online and also in hard copies at the Riverview Park Activity Center, Municipal Center, and Community Center. Our response has been good so far, but we want everybody's input. This is your chance. And we also want to remind you, and I'll keep reminding everybody, that public open house workshop takes place on Tuesday, March 21st, 5:30 to 7:00, at the North Augusta Community Center. Number three, travel sports season arrived in a hurry, right as we finished our rec basketball this past weekend at Riverview Park. We had travel volleyball and baseball at the park. And with all the rain we had Friday, our maintenance staff and crew did a fantastic job getting our fields playable for Saturday morning for USSA baseball. It was also a great weekend of economic impact. I got some figures late this afternoon that you don't have in front of you. Crown Plaza was 74% occupancy on Friday and went to 91%, 161 rooms sold on Saturday. Now, obviously, that's not all of sports travel, but a portion of that is. Sleep Inn had 10 rooms sold to travel baseball. Holiday Inn Express had a 95% occupancy on Saturday, which included baseball and volleyball teams in their hotels. So good weekend, good start for, for our sports travel industry. Number four, Pat Carpenter's favorite, Miracle League Field update. PRT administrative staff and board members of the wrecking crew met with Sports Turf Company Incorporated out of Dalton, Georgia to discuss sports turf options for the North Augusta Miracle League Field. What we're looking for, and we've been looking for all along, and we think we have found it, is a surface that not only meets the needs of the wrecking crew participant, but also works for the entire community, a total adaptive, inclusive-type turf. And that, that would make our facility stand out, you know, to be all-inclusive for everyone. Number five, Riverview Park concessions update. We had an interesting weekend. That's not in front of you. We had some folks, volleyball, travel volleyball is a different type of event. event where we have one a year. CSRA Heat runs that volleyball event. We're just a rental facility, but there was concern concession-wise. And that event, we have an agreement with the event organizer where the teams bring in their own food, health food options to supply their players and so forth. So, in the past, we've tried concessions with these events, and I had a lot of success, but we may have to revisit that going forward. And one of the differences there is they do a fantastic job of, in that agreement, of cleaning up after the fact. And, you know, nobody, they don't sell anything. You know, we still have our vending machines open, but we will look at that. And we also want you to know that due to staffing issues and the rising cost of supplies and shrinking profit margins, we are looking at options of potentially outsourcing contracting concession operations. We'll keep you updated on where that might lead us to. And lastly, that you don't have, Riverview Park Activity Center will play host to the North Augusta Open Pickleball Classic this Saturday and Sunday. There are 226 registered participants, and the senior division is United States Senior Pickleball sanctioned event, and is a South Carolina Pickleball Association qualifying event. So, good weekend for pickleball coming up.
Is this different than the pickleball tournament they had, the first one that they had in CSRA last year?
Yes, it is. Same group, Mr. Robbie Bell working with this, but different tournament, yes.
Good stuff.
Alright. Thank y'all.
Can I add something?
Yes.
Rick, and I'm gonna hold up for Rick a minute. I'm gonna tell y'all, North Augusta Park and Recreation is so busy anymore. And I know this is not the monthly report, but we as council members and mayor have got to look at the staffing at Riverview Park. There's a lot of times issues with fights and things like that, because there's not enough people in the building to work it. And concession and these things, it's hard to get people. So, whenever we do our, go back to our retreat, I think we really need to look, Rick, and I don't think Rick will boo me on this, but I think we need help at the rec center. It used to be, you know, in between your seasons, but there's no in-between seasons anymore. Just like this basketball, and all this is over, but here we come with volleyball, pickleball, basketball tournaments. So, it's a year-round, right, Rick?
No, that's correct, and you're just giving me a head start to what you all will hear from me.
Yeah. Well, I just want everybody to be thinking on that. And not that Rick and I haven't even talked about this. We have not. I'm just there, myself, observing and seeing things as used to not happen, but due to the crowds, which is a blessing. I was doing some memory, looking in my boxes of pictures and newspaper articles, and I pull one out, Riverview Park Activity Center building does not need to be built. It is overpriced over everything, and that was 1989. And I look at that building, what a blessing it is to the citizens and young people. So, like I said, Rick, I want to toot your horn for over there, and Bob did a wonderful job.
That's right, two Bobs too.
He's here there. But if anything's growing in this city, it's at Riverview Park. I'm telling you, that is the highlight.
That's a good segue, because that exactly, that concept is exactly what our retreat's going to be about. As we look in the future, next 10 years, what does that mean with our growth? And those are the things we'll be talking about. So, we're in good shape. Thank you, Rick.
Next up, Tom Caesar from Public Works.
The Waterworks Bridge Replacement Project, we had bid the site work associated with that early this month, and we got one bid on that, and it was nearly double our available budget. So, we rejected that bid and have, and speaking with the other plan holders, the general issue that I heard was that just the time of construction that I had advertising that project just was not sufficient to meet schedules. And so, we have extended that completion date a couple months, and I re-advertize the project. We will open those bids this Thursday. We're hopeful we'll get at least two bids this time. The alleyway resurfacing project that was budgeted for this year, we had awarded that project late last year. Our contractor is prepared to mobilize and begin that paving work. And so, we're having a pre-construction meeting tomorrow morning, and following that meeting, I will hopefully be able to furnish maps and a time, a specific time schedule to you and as well as to the affected businesses downtown.
That was my question. Good. So, at the next meeting, we'll know that. Perfect.
Yes. And then lastly, we had an unplanned drainage, stormpipe failure. It's a pipe that runs between Raven Drive and Vireo Drive, and opened up a large sinkhole in close proximity to a residence. So, we are, streets and drains will be working to replace that pipe in its entirety, hopefully starting later this week. We have some permitting. We had to get done out of the way first, but we have all the material on hand, and so we'll start it crossing Vireo Drive again later this week.
Last but not least, JD McCauley from HR.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like always, we have our employment opportunities in front of you. We update those every Friday. And for the folks that are listening, it's on our website, northaugusta.se.gov/jobs. If anyone has any questions about these positions, they can give us an email at hr@northaugusta.se.gov. Just kind of a public service announcement, but you also probably saw we emailed, we're having a, recognizing our employees for International Employee Appreciation Day. Some of you guys have businesses, just giving you a heads-up, that's this Friday. We made arrangements with Sheila's. They're gonna help us out, give us, recognize our employees. And thank you to Mayor and Council Administration. You guys appreciate our employees every day of the year, so we're very thankful for you guys. The last thing is Aiken Tech. We're supporting them. They support us for their job fair on March 22nd from 11:00 to 2:00. If you'd like to come out and talk to us, I know Public Safety always has a big presence there. If anyone in the community is looking to get hired at the city, we'll be there. Look forward to speaking with folks there. If you guys have any questions.
For the councils as well, just as a disclaimer, my guidance to JD for recruiting has been
that we're going to maintain communications technicians, firefighters, and public safety officers as a recurring slot on the advertisement. So, even if we got to 100% within those commodity or those personnel areas, we would still advertise those jobs, so we at least had a ready bench to pull from, because those three positions in particular across all governments right now are hard to fill. So, just wanted to make sure you were aware of that as we go through our different hiring models. And with that, that includes our department details, and if you're ready, we'll move into item three, if the mayor's matters, if that's up for y'all. Okay.
Follow yours, let's go.
Can somebody get the next presentation up, please? I'll take a quick stab at this, and so ultimately, the Public Safety Department, along with the rest of the staff, made a presentation at a previous study session to the council, and we got some guidance out of that. So, I wanted to summarize the discussion that we had at that study session, and we had a couple of key takeaways. So, we made a number of recommendations that are up on the screen for everybody else watching, but that basically was to move to a call-by-call response, which mirrors the state-level law enforcement agency, notably South Carolina Department of Highway Patrol, along with Aiken County, as they roll that particular model. We also wanted to move this out of a policy and into an ordinance. We requested to have a separate heavy towing rotation, and we also wanted to increase our rates to match the state of South Carolina, so we're consistent with that. And at that point in time, the city council provided some guidance, which was using a radius to determine company eligibility, leaving the response time at 20 minutes v. 40 minutes, and also that the companies must have a South Carolina presence. So, even if they're a Georgia-based company, they have to have something within the predetermined radius inside South Carolina for them to be able to participate in that aspect. Part of the other guidance that we received from council was to get feedback from existing towing companies, and I believe a number of those folks are present tonight. And so, in order to keep this moving, what I'd like to do is give them the opportunity for no more than five minutes per company to make a, I won't say a presentation, but at least give their feedback on the effects of this potential policy and their thoughts on the matter. So, we have five companies that are listed here that had indicated they wanted to speak this evening, and so we did this alphabetically and in no other order. So, we'll start off with the Benner Towing Service, and I believe Mr. Paul Benner would be the representative for that service. And Jamie, if you could keep a timer for us, then make sure we keep it to five minutes per. No? I think if we could, we'd rather have this go in order, unless you're going to be speaking for all the tow companies.
Paul, if you would, just state your name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Paul Benner, Benner Towing Service, 1015 Edge Field Road, North Augusta.
Thank you, Paul.
You thought ordinance is back up? Are you talking about changing the list that you had a minute ago? I think, my personal opinion is the public safety city ordinance is a good thing. I think it needs to change to a city ordinance, code enforcement go out, so there's some oversight. That's my opinion on that. The call-to-call, I could live with it, but I prefer the week thing for my vacation time. Right now, I can plan my vacations because it's week to week. I don't have nothing to do with the heavy rotation. These guys back here can talk to you about that. The rates, I won't argue with you about that. The radius thing, that's the same thing. And I think it was five miles, that's respectable, and response time, I don't have a problem with that one in South Carolina. My biggest issue was the highway patrol thing. From my understanding of it was, for me to remain on the city list, I have to go and be on the highway patrol list. Why? North Augusta's my home. I serve North Augusta. I don't want to serve Aiken County on the highway patrol. I don't mind you following their rules, but don't make me be on their rotation. That's my personal opinion. The other thing is, it's not broke. Why are we trying to fix something that's not broke? Originally, this thing, I was back in this fight years ago. Can of worms got open, and here we go again. Back then, y'all said, minimum of six, maximum of 10. Leave it alone, put 10 on there. But, change it to a city ordinance, follow, you know, the highway patrol rules, but don't demand we be on it.
Just, Paul, if you don't mind, just educate me as far as your views about, what is the angst about the highway patrol list, just so I can understand, because I'm not, just so I know.
You know, me personally, some of these other guys do both. I don't want to do both. It's, you know, highway patrol, you're gonna have more calls, and here's the situation you're gonna run into if you require us to be on a highway patrol and follow their rules. Okay. For example, I get a call in North Augusta. Well, a minute later, highway patrol calls me. I'm going to that highway patrol call list and forgetting about North Augusta because you're saying we gotta follow their rules. If we don't go to that call, we get kicked off, so then we're not on either list. So, North Augusta gets left out. Just, you know, like I said, I'm here to serve the city. I care less about the county. Not being ugly about that, that's just me. I've been here 15 years on this list. I've been in business three weeks, be 31 years, too long, but, you know, back when I got on, I had to go through this process like everybody. I waited till there was an opening, and I got put on. Y'all want to put more people on, put them on. But leave it alone, it's not broke. That's all I got to say.
Sounds good. Thank you, Paul.
Commissioner.
Any questions for me before I sit in?
No, you've answered mine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Paul.
Next up, we have Hager's Muffler and Automotive. I believe Mr. Daniel Haber is here.
Daniel, if you just state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Daniel Hager, 3412 Jefferson Davis Highway, Graniteville, South Carolina. I'm with him. The rates do need to go up, of course. The cost of everything's went up. But as far as the rotation like highway patrol, I'm like, I'd rather keep it where we know our weeks, because that way you can actually plan to do something.
Now, how far out on the highway patrol, I mean, you're, like, you're Graniteville, you said, right? Alright.
We have a certain zone.
So, I mean, are you talking almost to Columbia, or?
No. We don't even go past probably exit 17 or 18, maybe.
But you, y'all feel what Paul said, you don't want to even go that far?
No, we don't want to go further than what we do already. We have a certain zone, zones.
Real quick, are you okay with expanding the list up to 10? I know Paul said he was okay with it.
I am, but I'd rather keep it the way it is. I mean, we literally had to buy a company out to get on it, so.
I got you.
But also, on that, I've talked, and I'm sorry, Jim, I had told several of these young men I talked to today, they could not speak tonight. I said, study sessions are not for people to speak. You come here, and then we discuss it, and then next week before we vote, you have your privilege. But I'm glad they're getting to speak tonight. I'm glad of that. But what about these wreckers? One guy told me today, he said, Pat, I've been trying to get on there for three years and hadn't got on yet. See, that's, I think that's what triggered some of this for us, because some people saying, well, we can't get on it.
Yeah, well, we couldn't either. We had to literally buy someone out.
Yeah, yeah.
Daniel, the main angst I'm hearing from Paul, it was the highway patrol list. For you, the main issue, I mean, besides in a perfect world, you don't want to do anything, but the piece that's getting you is the rotation in general.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just trying to see where we are. Thank you.
Next up, we have Lively's Paint and Body. I believe Mr. Benny Lively's here.
I don't see.
Alright, moving on to State Line Wrecker Service, Mr. Brett Savage.
You know the drill, Brett. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for taking the time to just hear me out.
Is that your name and address for the record, Brett?
Yes, sir. My name is Brett Savage. I meant address, 815 Tyler Avenue, North Augusta, South Carolina. I've been in the towing business for 36 years. You might not believe me, but I have.
No, you don't look that old.
Yeah. Trust me, I have. I used to work for Kendrick Paint and Body. Prior to this meeting right now, y'all had an accusation that Kendrick Paint and Body was on y'all's rotation. That is not true. Kendrick Paint and Body has never been on the North Augusta list, because I worked for them for 12 years. And I moved to North Augusta in 96, and in 2009, I opened up State Line Wrecker at my location on Tyler Avenue. We have a perfect list system as it is now. It used to be six of us, it's five of us now. Years ago, over 10 years ago, when we met prior to this, we had, we could have up to 10, but we choose to have six. And it's always worked out great. I'm a certified firefighter in Georgia and South Carolina, and I didn't get no special treatment. I had to wait three years to get put on, of me going back and forth aggravating them at public safety. We have a perfect system. It's not broke, so let's don't fix it. The only thing I need to see change, I think, is rates, and they've been talking about that for at least two and a half years, three years. With our insurance, it costs us to operate. I'm a small business. It's high. It's real high. And we need the rates to raise, because highway patrol's rates go up every single year. So, as that, you know, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with y'all.
So, Brett, so what I'm hearing from you, the main piece for you... So Brett, so what I'm hearing from you, the main piece for you that's kind of the angst is, you know, you had to kind of pay your dues and wait three years to get on the list.
Absolutely.
And probably the idea of expanding the list is not something that you're excited about?
No, sir, I'm totally against it. I think, I think that Lieutenant Sadler and the chief are doing a wonderful job at running this list system. And everybody knows when their week's up, they can take a vacation, just like everybody in here does. You can plan something, have a life.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brett.
Can I approach you?
Just give it to that young lady right there, and she will give it to us.
Just the idea of how much it costs.
Okay. Thank you, Brett. Appreciate it.
That's fine. Thank you, sir.
Last but not least, Wayne's Automotive Center with Jeff and Sherry Corbett.
Good afternoon. I am Sherry Corbett. We are with Wayne's Automotive Center. And let the record reflect, our name is Jeff and Sherry, C-O-R-B-E-T-T, just like our business licensee. So, but moving forward, we have a location in North Augusta. We've been on the list for, I think, since 2011. It as well took us three years to get on that list to meet requirements as they were written. I don't, we don't necessarily have a problem or an objection with changing it from one week, because we are a bigger function than these folks are. But we also respect why it's like it is, and it's not broke. We often help them out when they're in a situation, they got two or three calls, they just got back to back or something, so we're a larger outfit and we're able to help them and assist them. The rate issue, definitely. It costs me $12,000 a month, on a good month, on an average, to insure my trucks. And that's not counting lurkers comp, that's another 11,000 that I pay additionally to employ all those people to keep them safe. And so, I mean, I'm a little concerned where it says keep, create a separate heavy towing rotation for large vehicles. I was under the impression we were already performing at that level. So I would need some clarification on that one. And I guess, again, we don't have a problem with the highway patrol, you know, recommendations. I would caution you that highway patrol has been in some situations as well, when they've changed their policies. So I just, you know, when they change their policies, you're automatically changing yours as well without any, you know, any, you can't do anything about it. So even the mile radius, 20 minutes, we want to clear the road fast. I don't, I mean, I don't think it needs to be any different than that. It needs to be done as quick as it can. If you've got anything.
One thing about highway patrol, too, they have a lot of positives with highway patrol, with the rates. They also have something secondary that they call like special operations, which would be if you had something more than just a normal wreck, just somebody you go pick up and go with. Thing about special operations, you usually talk to the officer, and it could be because there's four car pileup, or there could be a fuel leak. And in that situation, that you, with North Augusta at this time, we have a situation like that, you just go to the officer. And the common sense rule usually, most time comes in, and it's taken care of. They understand that you may need more than one man or one truck, you know, to get this done, because, you know, it can get bigger. Sometimes highway patrol can get to the fact where they can only, you know, they have to call somebody above them, just, you know, to get us where we can have special operations. Sometimes that's a, you know, can be a delayed thing when you do have it. There's a lot officers we work with, they all know us on interstate now, and they'll go ahead and make that decision for us, you know, that this is going to be more than just a normal, you know, wreck and go. Whether it's 18 wheels turned over, or it's been a bad wreck. So, but I agree with Sherry, there is some things, highway patrol system is not perfect either. You know, I wouldn't just adopt something without looking at it. Because we've gone to more than one meetings, and we've had problems with them, and we were wanting to bring it out when we thought we did. So I really just think that should be a little bit of background check before you disagree with them.
As far as case litigation, I would definitely encourage you to look up how many, you know, cases they've been involved with complaints.
The problem with the complaint system is they're supposed to have, like, a little board over it. So when you have a problem, but they, they've never done that in South Carolina. They've never set it up, and we've talked to the governor, we've talked to everybody, but they do not have, when you have a problem, they do not have a complaint oversight committee. It's basically one person, and no matter what's, what's there, what they say goes, and they're the judge and the jury, when you go to, when you only have it like that. So there's some of this is not, it doesn't need to be looked into, you know, so that you don't, you know, cause trouble, because it's not trouble, but it's, you know, you get a backlash when things, you know, when you don't have a sounding board. And that's what you need, you know, is to be able to do that.
I've got some previous information, too, as well, that says that, you know, you, this particular company that was questioning it would make, you know, $29,000, you know, extra a year, additionally 10,000 with a car. And after doing number crunching, you know, for the last three years, you know, we paid our business taxes on 33,000, 29,000, and 28,000. So, and that's only having that many people on the list. So while we may be increasing, you know, the rates, I mean, you're still going to take revenue away.
And with all that, everybody that's there now, like I say, okay, the system's not broke. We all work together good, and so if there is, you know, you could get too many where you can use to lose the quality of the people you have, because you're not making enough to be able to sustain what it's going to take to run this. And the thing about the one week is, even for us, we've got trucks everywhere. But when we got one week, North Augusta's the only place that does that. But it gives us, our dispatchers, myself, Sherry, the whole company knows for a week, we've gone to concentrate on North Augusta. That is our week to know, you know, that we put extra people on, you know, and to make sure that we're handling whatever load comes along. Where you got the county highway patrol, you don't, you don't have that. You can't even call them, ask them, am I next on the list? Or, you know, I mean, so you never, you're always in the dark. This we're not in the dark about, and it sure makes our lives a lot easier.
Let me ask you, are y'all the only one of the five that do large towing, as far as heavy trucks? You said you were the largest company, so I didn't know if y'all were doing any.
Yeah, Lively's does heavy duty.
Yes, we do heavy and super duty.
Yeah.
You're the largest company out of these.
And we do spill and clean up, too, if there's a fuel leak or, you know, something like that. And we have, you know, a separate company that does that also.
And if you've got, like, and maybe I misunderstood you, but three calls, and one, you know, right there together, would you call one of these others that's on the list, or the police call?
Generally, I mean, we've had an open working relationship. No one's complained, but I mean, we generally, as a general rule, know to only call someone that's on that list, because that's who is already pre-approved.
Yeah, we would, if we need to help, we go on and call the list. But, you know, and when we're planning, when we do that, that, you know, we try and keep struggling in the area. But if we know that, you know, we can't get through at that moment, we're going to ask somebody to help us that's on this list, you know, as all those, you know, everybody else would, too. And I think that's a good working relationship.
Oh, yeah. And do we know, Jim, how many towing services are in this area?
I don't have an exact count for you, Councilman.
All right, and we got six on there now, we use?
Five.
My only concern is, and I know y'all said y'all paid your price, and it took you three years to get on that. But is, is that right, too, to make everybody wait? You know, I mean?
I mean, I think it was just a source, for us, it was, ours was a little bit of zoning, a little bit of planning, development. I mean, it wasn't just the rotation list.
We had to be in the city limits at that time to be on the rotation list.
But that's not now, on the city limits?
I think that changed it.
Yeah, it's changed.
And the spot we, we just, we actually had been renting for years and years and years in a spot, but now we've actually bought property, you know, to have our location here at this firm.
Mr. Mayor, we've hit our five minutes, by the way.
We're definitely dedicated to it.
I would like to, I think they do a great job with communicating with us.
Oh, yeah.
And helping and looking out for the consumer as well.
You know, but like I say, five people, six people, you know, but there's just got to be some limit so that it's worth your time to put your best foot forward every time.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to have Public Safety provide some additional information to the council, and then be open to questions from y'all at this time. I'll turn it over to either Chief or Vern.
Mr. Mayor, you know, again, we talked about this before, and you know what, public safety supports obviously is, is patrol. We don't have to belong to patrol to follow the guidelines, and the guidelines and requirements are toward the wrecker companies themselves, and how they house them, and that type of thing. I don't think anybody's going to argue about the rates going up, and obviously accepting that. I think the big bone of contention, obviously, is the week to week, or call to call. You know, North Augusta's growing. I think it's best that we add some companies. I don't have any problems with that. But I think the big bone of contention is going to be what the council gives us as direction as far as a call by call, or we go back, or stay with the week, week to week.
Help me, and I'm going to, guys, I'm going to ask you some ignorant questions, okay? And you might have talked about this in the last study session, but this is the first time for me to deal with this. I mean, quite frankly, I mean, of the five, four of y'all that talked, the two, the one constant, go back to this highway patrol list. And I'm hearing that the highway patrol has had their issues. I'm hearing highway patrol, Paul doesn't even want to be on the list, due to if he comes to us, and highway patrol calls them, they have top authority. So educate me, that went past me at the study session. I don't really understand, again, where, because I'm not getting, I mean, I asked them, and they, nobody, they all want it to stay like it is. But they all said, you know, in general, except for helping with the vacation, they aren't going to lose sleep if we change the call to the rotation. I keep, I mean, I'm the only ones that kept hearing about the highway patrol.
No.
So I need to, I think we need to be educated on the nuance of the highway patrol, because evidently that's a piece that I thought was just given. But am I the only one that got that from?
No, I think.
I just need to understand that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, too, young men and ladies, I think going by the highway patrol with the rates is a plus for y'all, correct? Because you're going up.
But there's something about.
But following a lot of their rules and having to go to their.
That's what I need to understand. What are, that's part of.
But let me ask this one question.
What we were looking at, what we were looking at, and we may have misspoke, was that they just be a qualified tow service by South Carolina Department of Public Safety standards.
Okay.
You know, which means they would be inspected and that sort of thing, taking that responsibility off of us. Go ahead, Justin.
That would take the inspection off of the city. This way, if something were to happen, and there'd be some type of lawsuit, they would have already been inspected by highway patrol and state transport.
But if we go by the high school, I've been talking about the high school league all week, you know, the state championship. If we go by the highway patrol, their fees on charging, then are you required to go follow every other rule they have?
No, you could set the rules however you want.
You can just say, we're going to go by your rates, and?
Well, this policy was based off of Aiken County Sheriff's Office policy, which specifically says that to be on their rotation, the tow company must be approved by the South Carolina Department of Public Safety as a qualified tow service for the South Carolina Department of Public Safety rotation list prior to whatever date they set as each year. So.
And as far as our rates, Pat, our rates were set in place on January the 9th of 2012. So. And honestly, about the time that COVID hit, if I'm not mistaken, Brett came and asked about an increase. And in the ensuing time, to be perfectly honest with you, it's been low on our list of priorities to even bring it up. And we all, we both agree, all three of us agree, that to be competitive, to be on the same level with the other agencies in this area, it needs to go up. And we might as well just match highway patrol, and then we're riding in line with everybody else.
I think we're good on the rates. The part I'm still trying to understand is, so what you're telling me is, highway patrol, the only requirements they're going to have to do with highway patrol is just qualify, making sure they are qualified within the tow standard.
Correct, correct.
And that's what other communities are doing, so we aren't like the only one.
We just want them to be a qualified tow service. I mean, we don't want, you know, any Tom Dicker Harry showing up with a pickup truck and a tow chain.
But this doesn't put them on that list.
And be on our wrecker list.
So the example that gentleman gave is not, would not fall under this.
It would not have to be on highway patrol's list. They would have to be qualified to be on highway patrol.
Okay.
I think the first.
And I think we may have added to the confusion.
I was going to say, I think on the first time we talked about this, that's what was said, was be on the highway patrol list to be on ours. And I know that's where a couple guys called me and said, Eric, no, you know, we don't want to be on that list.
That's what I got.
Right. But I think that's where we got that last time.
That was a piece that threw me. Okay, I missed that.
But I don't think there's a problem with any of these companies being a certified tow company by South Carolina standards.
And our stance, you can correct me if I'm wrong, as far as a week by week, or a call by call, at, you know, we were told by council back in 2012, I think, or 2011, that a number between six and 10 was acceptable. We've always kept it at six. Chief Thomas and I meet every year and look at the number of complaints that we had. Were we providing a quality service to the citizens? You know, did we need to increase it? And most of the time, the answer was no. So we've been pretty consistent at six for the last few years. Whenever somebody dropped off for whatever reason, we would, we would add a company. Now, the fairest way to do that, and we weren't following the procurement policy, because we were never really given any, any guidelines, is we'd find out who all was interested, and we'd throw their name in a hat, and we'd draw their name out. I'd have somebody draw that wasn't even part of the public safety, one of our civilian employees.
We definitely need to solve that.
Was it the best way to do it? No, no, I understand what Mr. Zier's saying, that we, you know, we need to follow the procurement policy. But at some point, for these guys, it becomes diminishing returns, you know. Six, six to 10, you're looking at eight weeks a year, primary, for the most part, or either five weeks a year, if you have 10. You've got six is eight, with four left over, 10 is five with two left over.
For the mayor and councils, while I would tell you, regardless of whether, you know, your guidance is for a call to call, or for a week to week outline, what I would envision is that this would go through the standard procurement process. There would be a request for qualifications. The city would establish what the basic qualifications are. And so this may include things such as being able to pass South Carolina inspection and other rules that are associated with that, and then all the other guidance that we get from the council, and allow us to, just like we do any other RFQ, evaluate the proposals from the various tow companies to be able to see if they should be included on the list. But that wouldn't be a variable. It would be, based on the ordinance, that'd be proposed to be a hard number of not to exceed X number of companies, almost like an IDIQ contract, you'd have the ability to pull around. But I think one of the key issues that we need from a guidance perspective is the call to call versus the week to week. And I don't want to speak for Lieutenant Sadler or for Chief, but my understanding is they would rather mirror the call to call that Aiken County and the state of South Carolina Highway Patrol does, but I'll defer to their expertise in that.
That's what we'd like to do. And if that's council's wishes, then that's what we follow. One of the things, you know, as Jim has alluded to, you know, it needs to be in that procurement process. It needs to be, you know, solidified, and we go forward with that. But one of the things, and Kelly can speak to this, it needs to be legally defensible, and that's the main thing we need to come away with.
So let me ask you this. The other, my takeaway from this, from these gentlemen speaking, was that the other parts of it had to do with, I think several of you had mentioned having to wait to be on the list, you're like this. So I guess my other part question would be, in my mind, we would need to decide, really, what is a realistic number? Because evidently, for the most part, they're happy with, this is five, but you said six. I don't know how many we have, but.
There's currently five, because one of them has gone out of business.
I got you. One went out of business?
One decided not to remain on the list at the beginning of this year.
Oh, I got you.
And we knew this was coming, so.
And we know we didn't want to do it. So can we?
Maybe if I can.
So that's where we need to figure out, Kelly, with your.
If I can respond to that, and first, we're not at this point because of these people that are in the room tonight. We're at this point because of people that aren't in this room, that want to work, get on the list, and can meet all of the requirements. And we have a very difficult time. We may, we may be able. and can meet all of the requirements. And we have a very difficult time. I mean, we may, we may be able to, but trying to justify a number when we've got more than that number that want to be on the list. I don't think that's the problem now. I think that, that we've got five on the list. There may be two or three that would want to get on it. But it's going to be a continuing problem. As the city grows, there's going to be more want to do that. And that's one of the biggest problems is that the person meets the requirements, comes in and buys a business license. And then we tell them, oh, no, we've decided we're only going to have six on this list. And, uh, we're going to review it again in a year, two years, three years. We have a little bit of an issue. And so that, that to me is a problem to, to try to sit down. And I understand, from the standpoint of those of you doing the work, that there may be a number that some of you say is just not beneficial for us to do it anymore. If, if we're on a list with, that there's 15 people on the list, and that's the number we get calls, it doesn't, it doesn't generate the business that we need. And, and, and that's a problem. And that may be the only way we could sit down and come up with a number that would have to be reviewed almost yearly, uh, to determine what we're going to do there. So we can justify to a court that this list right now can't be more than this because of the number of calls, because they, they, the, the people on the list can't justify doing it because of the business they get.
Let me ask you this. Right now, the policy is up to 10, right? I know we haven't had 10, but it has up to 10. If that wasn't, right now, that 10 was that number, do you, are you saying that even having that number could be?
I've, I've got to have a lot more information to justify that number at 10. I mean, I've got to get an idea of the number. And, and I'm sure we've got it. So my number of calls per year, uh, cost of, and, and they've, you've provided us some costs tonight to somewhere, get to that figure and be able to justify that. Uh, so that, that to me is the biggest, is the biggest problem.
So here's what I'm saying. I'm gonna shut up and everybody will talk. So in my mind, the two things that kept coming up, and we cleared one of them with the highways. I think we're good on that, is now, um, it goes back to the numbers, the requirement. And what does that look like to protect us legally? It makes sense. And also, what does that look like? But the thing about is unless, if our current number's 10, unless we have had more than four people want to join, 10, legally, if we could do the number, it looks like 10 would be a normal number since we haven't, never been 10. So like the guy whoever came, if us wanted to be on, if he qualified, he could be on that number. So to me, I think the number is a requirement we got to figure out. The rest of it, for the most part, I think everybody would go to all the other options.
Well, again, what I'm saying is to me, the hardest thing to defend, if we get, is, is if we say, you got a business license, you're qualified, but no, you can't be on our list. And that may not be a problem right now. We may just, it may be we say, well, with eight, it still works for everybody. Uh, but again, we're going to have to be prepared to, to review that and justify it every year. Now, the other thing I was thinking, and I, and I think that without question, the, uh, in my opinion, the alternating, not weekly, but alternating on calls, uh, is the, is the, the best arrangement for us to have. And I'm thinking with one of the things they've explained, there may be a way that within the policy, that a business could give sufficient advance notice to the city that this week, this week, and this week, we won't be available. And so you're talking about taking vacations and people be out of town, that maybe there would be a way to put that in. Obviously, there'd have to be a limit on that, uh, but there might be a way to put that in that would help them if you do it on a call by call basis. So whatever week, they can't be there. Not Masters Week.
Mr. Zier, I, I agree with you. That's, going, going call by call is definitely the fairest way to, to even out the number of calls for these guys. Because you may have a week, say the first week in January, whoever's on call, let's just say Ben or towing, they get, they get three toes for that week. Well, then the second week rolls around and Brett's on call and he picks up 21 cars that week. And then the next week it's seven, and the next week after that it's 12, and so on and so forth. So it, it, over the time, I believe these guys will agree with me that it, it evens out. But if you want to fairly break it down, call by call is, is the way to go for them. Now, it's a lot more, uh, you know, they've got, they basically got to be ready to answer the phone every night depending on the number of calls that, that would come in for us in a 24 hour period.
Well, I think that's, do y'all keep extra staff on the weeks y'all have? Out of curiosity, show of hands, do y'all keep extra driver on the weeks you have? Yes. See, it, I don't think it's about that. It's, it's, it's staffing because they know, hey, if North Augusta calls, we've got to be there. So if we go to a call by call, you may have to go through, get to the fifth guy before, hey, I got someone available. So, you know, I kind of agree with them on that. Now, as far as the other people getting on the list, what is wrong with just saying, all right, first come, first served. You want to be on the list, sign up. We just had someone drop off. At the beginning of every year, call them. Are you still interested? Okay, your name's still, you're still number one, you're still number two, you're still number three. Is that not defensible? Well, I mean, I, and I, and again, I'm not a lawyer by any means, but.
I'm back to the point. When I came to North Augusta, I was the second attorney.
Right.
I wish it had stayed that way. You know, I think that'd have been a better arrangement. All right. But, but I think, I think if you've got somebody that's in business, they meet the requirements, they say, I want to be on your towing list, for us to, you know, we may be able, for a little bit, but if we tell them, no, I'm sorry, you're not. It's a closed shop. It's been in, in the, and, and I'm sure all of you are familiar with it. Every time we talk about this, uh, I was in meetings about this before quality towing versus Myrtle Beach. I was in it about that time and been in them now. But, uh, that, in that case, it was brought up all of this. And basically, they talked about a monopoly. They talked about the fact that if you have a, a real, uh, limited list, you're getting into a situation of almost a franchise. And that's what all of this we're trying to get away from.
But just, you know, hearing these guys, and I, and I'm not disagreeing, but you know, hearing all of these guys, we get too many on the list. How many of these guys are going to drop off? And then we're back in the same situation. We only got three or four because they can't make it financially work. That's the only thing. Because again, normally when we make ordinances and policy, it's our employees. This is a, you know, a third party. And, you know, like I say, if we end up doing 10 and they say, well, it's not feasible for me, then we may be back down to four.
Well, I think.
The growth that's going to happen the next 10 years is going to be profitable.
Yeah. But I think we need to find out how many wrecker service are in this area. Now Vern, do we have, I know this one guy told me today, he's been trying to get on for three years and cannot do it. All right. Do we have a lot of them knocking at the door? I want to get on and I can't get on?
We have several waiting in the wings right now.
Yeah.
We would probably be at 10 like that if not.
And why haven't we gone to 10? If, you know, we said six to 10, why did we hold it to six?
Well, like I said earlier, Chief Thomas and I meet every year and discuss whether or not we, we need to increase. And six has been, has worked. It's been great. We haven't had any complaints. I mean, these, these guys, this is probably the first time some of these guys have seen me in 10 years. I mean, literally. Because we just haven't had to have meetings or anything like that. And, um, so we've, you know, we look at it and say, any problems, any issues? Nope, nope. Are we, are we answering our calls? Yes, we are. Do we need to go up? Do we need to increase? No, we really don't. And, and six has been a good number. Now, I, I understand and I agree with Kelly where, or Mr. Zier, where I don't know how we could put a, a high number limit on the number of businesses. If they qualify, I'd say we have to let them on. Do I think it'll be 15? Probably not.
And I.
10 to 12, maybe. And then, like I think Eric said, at some point, these people, uh, they're, they're going to have to make a decision. At, at 12, they're getting four weeks a year.
And these that are sitting around waiting to get on the list, they've bought city license, and some of them are within the city limits.
I haven't told any of them to do anything.
No, but I mean, they've got to have a license to even operate.
They do.
So they're doing that, plus some of them are paying city taxes.
I haven't told any of them.
And I mean, I, and nothing against y'all, uh, but I do have a little problem of people wanting to get on the list and can't. And I know y'all said you paid your three years, but is that really right to make everybody pay you something? I don't, I don't know. This is a tough decision.
Ms. Pat, those people that have business licenses can still do business in the city. I may not want Benner to come pick up a truck. And I might say, you know what? I want, I want Kendricks to come get it. I want Ricks.
I know, but the complaint is that the city itself is, and I mean, I've been around a long time. And this is Kelly said. We hashed this out many moons ago, the same problem, the same problem. So it's, it's tough.
I can tell you, Chief Thomas and I kind of hope we'd never have to have this discussion with you guys again. After 12, 12 years ago, whatever, but here we are.
All right, let's just, I'm curious, just, I mean, we're not voting anything tonight anyway. It's a study session. We're just trying to get, uh, Kevin, you got any comments?
I mean, I, I don't have a whole lot to add. I think most of the points and questions have been raised. I, I am struggling, just like everybody else is with, I don't think, I mean, I, you know, there's got to be a way that you can do some calculation based on prior year number of accidents or incidents. And I mean, you can come up with a calculation that is a fair and standard way to kind of determine what you would anticipate it for and then limit it. And I would imagine if it's fair and it's, it's applied to everybody and you can justify it, you're okay. So I mean, I, you know, I, I don't think it needs to be unlimited, although at the same point, if you leave it unlimited, it's going to self-limit to whatever the right amount. I mean, the free market's going to come in at that point to a degree, and it's going to self-limit to whatever is profitable for those people to come on it. And, and, but you're just going to kind of constantly have that struggle. And then I worry about exactly what they said. What sort of service are we providing to the citizens? If you've got a list that's constantly fluctuating and, 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 you know, people are, are getting, the only people that you get on the list anymore are the startups that don't really understand they're not going to make a whole lot of money on it. So there's, there's some quality issues you got to think. So I, I don't know. I, I, it's, it's, I'm okay with just about everything on here. I do feel a little bit better. I, I was concerned with what, I think Paul or one of them brought up about the, uh, forcing them to be on the state list or the, the highway patrol list and us becoming second. But it, it sounds like I understood it the same way you did, that that's resolved. So I don't really have an issue with that. But I think there's, I don't think the list needs to, I, I completely understand what you're saying, Kelly. I mean, I, I understand and I don't disagree with you. That there's got to be some way to either make it completely open. And then again, just let the market regulate what happens with that. There's going to be some, some bad side effects with that, I think. Um, or figure out a way to, you know, again, use based on response time, you know, anticipated response times based on the number of accidents and how many tow companies or something along the lines where you've got some sort of a, a calculation based on the prior year's number of, of accidents and, and maybe, you know, inflationary rate or something in there to where it's. But, you know, if I had to sit and come up with how to do that right now, um, couldn't do it. But it, it just seems like there's got to be some answer in between an unlimited list and a, and a fixed list at six.
I agree. Okay.
You've said that really well. Um, some of my first thoughts, you know, speaking on Kelly, it does sound like we've sort of created a monopoly. But my thoughts, just while you were speaking, were, is how is it still not, who gets the first call first if we go call by call versus week by week? So how does, do we always call Benner Towing Service first and then?
No, ma'am. We'd have a, if, if, for example, 10 companies, if we put out a request for qualifications and 10 companies qualified, those 10 companies would go on the list. And then the dispatch would call the number one company on the list. If they weren't available or they were tied up another call, they go to the number two company and then the number three company, and then rotates all the way through number 10, back up to number one. So everybody's going to get, you know, a, a call by call rotation, uh, going through that list methodology as opposed to, uh, picking favorites or at the beginning of every day, you know, you know, Benner Towing Service goes to the top of the list again. It's a rotating list. So that's how they would execute that plan.
And then the only other thoughts I was having is, you know, we talked the last time around on the system isn't broken or, or, or that's what they were saying. But before, I feel like we were kind of leaning towards there is a little bit of brokenness into the system. And that's kind of what you guys were delivering to us and, and expressing your concerns. And I think I would imagine that that also is implying to, towards the future growth of the city too. So trying to plan for that next 10 years versus what we've been doing for the past 10 years. Is that, is that on par too? Outside of that, I kind of agree with everybody else's comments.
Bob, how about you, sir?
I have very little to say about it, but, um, I do, I do believe and agree with the people who are here tonight, knowing that their input is very important. And thank y'all for coming. I do think we need to cap it and maybe seven would be where we would cap the number. I also think that we need to look at, excuse me, um, the response time, and incorporate that some way into the list. And if you, if you cannot be at the accident or at the call site within 30 minutes, then if maybe it took you an hour, it needs to be looked at to make, to make sure that you're responding as you agreed to. I do like the call by call, call to call process. And I, and let me revert back to, to the seven number. There's going to be growth here. You're going to be looking at that, this again, in three years or less. With the growth, I think it needs to be looked at every year, which y'all do. But these folks need to be involved as well. That's, those are my comments.
Okay. Anything more for you, Pat?
One, a few more little questions. Most of y'all's, are any of you, and I see, um, Mr. Daniel Hager is muffler and automotive. So when you tow in a car, you'll make money off that car with muffler or whatever else, right? Are most of the wrecking companies painting body shops or not? Or just wrecker companies? Towing service. Yeah. So I know Lively's painting body. So I presume when you bring in these cars, you're going to have a little more money coming in off the person because they'll fix your car. Um, let me see. Well, I guess that's about all I was saying. But it, it's a hard decision because I see where y'all coming from, but I also see these other people who want to be on that list, who call us and complain. You know, it's, it's a hard decision.
David, about you?
Excuse me. Um, as a small business owner, I understand this big time. Um, what I get from them this evening is that, you know, if they are on a call to call, they're going to have to change their plan to have somebody on basically 24 hours a day, every day. And I, I just think as a small business owner, you know, with staffing and all the issues that people have now, that, that really restricts them. So I kind of lean towards the thought process that they do have that one week. But then again, the interjection of being able to say, hey, I don't want to work this week, sounds okay. But if I was a person and I had a business, then like you said, the, the, the business model itself is going to dictate whether or not you can be on the list. Because if you can't afford to have, you know, two people on call basically 24 hours a day, and then you get three calls one time and the two guys at two o'clock in the morning, the only ones you have. And then you can't get that third car or whatever the case may be. I don't know the business. I'm just, just speaking out loud about this. So I, you know, the small business owners, those guys need to really be the ones that make the dictation. I understand that we need to create the parameters. It sounds like to me the best thing for the business owners is to have that one week time. But even during that one week time, if I'm standing corrected, let's say one of them is not available and they can't make the call, then you still just go down the list and call another one. So you, you still have the opportunity to get that business. That would be my idea of something would be better. And then, you know, as far as people being on the list, adding more people to the list, I think. I think, you know, a business owner's going to make that decision. And I don't know how many calls they get a year on average, or a month, or whatever the model shows, whatever they get, you know, I'm just going to throw numbers out there. If they have, if they have to have 30 calls a month to be able to function that part of their operation, then any other business that does it is going to have to figure out how to get 30 calls a month, to be able to make their operation go. So I think, you know, limiting, unlimiting the list, or making the list larger, is going to put a bigger strain on our business owners, because they may go from 30 calls a month to 12 calls a month. And then if they're not getting 12 calls a month from their main source of calls, then where do we put them? Where do we put them in deciding whether they want to continue to do business with North Augusta? And I think we want to make sure that we have as many people that can and are willing to, but you know, that, that's going to dictate it themselves. So let's say we get 12 people on the list. Well, at some point in time, two, three, four, five of them are going to be like, I can't be on the list anymore, because I only get three calls a month. And I just think that that's going to dictate itself, even if you had it at 10. Unfortunately, it's going to be the smaller guys that'll probably fall off that list, because they're not going to be able to hang out, you know, they're not going to be able to sustain with the fewer calls by having a larger list. So I think, I think it self-serves itself. I mean, it's going to work, but it's, unfortunately, I think it's also going to be the worst on the smaller guys. But, I mean, anyway.
I mean, most of the, I guess I'm going to be the negative Nancy here. You know, here we are, we're government officials, and this is the problem with government in general, not just us, but at every level, we're making decisions on something we have no clue about. Obviously, we've got the guys here, and I understand the business part, you know, I'm a businessman, too, and, you know, you've got to have so, so much. I think all of this is driven by somebody who's mad because he can't get on the list, so he threatens with a lawsuit, and Kelly, I understand, you know, we've got to be able to defend ourselves, and I don't know what that answer is. But I do think hearing most of these guys, week to week, is probably better, because again, you know, staffing, and I have a feeling there could be a time where maybe we call all of these guys and nobody's available, because it wasn't their week, I don't have anybody available, or, you know what, I'm getting up early in the morning, it's not my week, I don't want to do it. So, I mean, from what they're saying, I think the week-to-week probably needs to go. Now, as far as the number of companies, you know, Bob, I think you threw a number of seven out there, that would give y'all roughly seven weeks, and, you know, some a little more, some a little less, is that doable? Again, I don't know, kind of like David said, I mean, we're not in this business. So it is a frustrating thing. It'd almost be nice if Vern could just fill out a card and say, here's the 10 people, pick one, and then the city's out of it. I know, and, oh, I know, no, I know you can't do that, I'm just saying, this is what's frustrating, because, you know, unlike bigger cities who have their own wreckers, we're not like, you know, Atlanta, New York, Chicago, where they can control that, you know, these are their employees, this is a third party, and I'm kind of stuck. I've got to lean towards these guys, you know, with what they want. But I do understand, you know, Vern, like you said, if you put it out, you said you could probably have 12 companies in total that would want to be on the list, and then you're going to have half of them drop off. So I don't know, you know, if there's a way to just sit there and say, all right, first come, first served, sign up, and then, you know, here, we've had someone drop off, so the next guy comes on. I mean, I don't know what's, what's fair, I don't know what's defendable.
Jamie, could you put the next slide up, please?
I'm going to wrap.
Anyway.
I'm going to wrap this up and above.
Can I please say one more thing?
I'm going to say something, too, but go ahead.
All right. And Eric, to me, you've got to remember, this is part of the city government, when you're saying, we don't really have any say. City, the police department is part of the government body of the city of North Augusta. Huh? No, I'm talking about we are, and we do have to be responsible. I mean, I could see if our police wasn't involved, and a private citizen just called, Paul, I've been in a wreck, come get me, Paul. But we are being responsible for what's happening, and so it is part of our duty to do this, I think. But in helping them, I think we should go the week-by-week, because that would help y'all with your staffing, go up with the highway patrol, increase your fees, then maybe that'll make up, but I do really feel in my heart, this needs to be open to everybody, not six people.
All right. So Jim, here's where we are. We need to, so what I'm getting out of this is, we need to move in the city ordinance, okay? We all agree on that. And I, and, and the question, I think we need to get justification, and Kelly, and Chief, you may have to get some information, the bottom line is, we can't, if Kelly's opinion is attorney, is we can't go with a number, then we need to have a way to be able to justify that, you said that could be possible annually, if we had, if we had numbers.
I think you could possibly do that.
But, but we need to, we need to know what that looks like. So I think we ought to consider that part of it. But I will tell you this about the number, here's the bottom line, it's like, I'm a business, we're all business owners, and it's, take from Kevin, same situation, you know, it's free enterprise, and, and the bottom line is, it's like us saying, well, you know, we can only have two Sheilas in town, you know? This community is going to grow tremendously in the next 10 years, and quite frankly, six towing companies will not be able to handle the growth of this company and this city in the next 10 years, just like we can't handle one Sheilas, and we can't handle one restaurant. We are going to grow. So in my mind, what I would like for us, what I'm hearing from everybody is, most, everyone's agreed on everything, we need to get some clarification from Kelly on what it would look like, could we come up with a number? Could we do it legally? What that would mean, that, I mean, if it ends up being real costly for us time-wise, maybe we don't go that. And then, I think, we got, I hear three people saying, week-to-week, Bob said call, the call, Kevin, I don't know what you and...
I'm kind of on a formula basis, if we add a whole bunch of companies, then you guys are going to be losing weeks, and so I feel like call-to-call ends up being a more fair scenario in that scenario, but, yeah.
Yeah, so here's what I'm saying, in my mind, the two things that are important for the city is, we need to be the city ordinance, let's get that out of public safety, it's not your role, city ordinance and everything that falls with the procurement, or that piece of it. I think we're all on page with that, and let's look, if we can, on, is there a way to justify a number? And then, besides that, I would say, folks, you bring us a resolution, ordinance with the, what your recommendation is for, is it call-to-call, week-to-week? I can't remember which one it was.
Next slide, please.
Huh? I can't remember what the recommendation was.
It's a staff recommendation remains, moving to a call-to-call in the city ordinance.
So, again, I'm getting three, four, kind of week-to-week. Quite frankly, to me, I don't know enough to whether it's benefit or not, I like the idea of streamlining, but to me, the more important issue is us not being sued, and opening it up, and doing it a way, and do it in the ordinance. So I think that's what we need to do. Is that clear?
Yes, sir.
Bring it us, and we're going to do like everything else, we're going to vote on it.
Acknowledged.
We're on the same page about that? They're going to do the resolution with, with the things that we'd agreed on, and then we're going to decide.
We didn't.
Well, I said, so there's three, four that said week-to-week, okay? I'll flip a coin, quite frankly, I don't, it doesn't bother me. That's, to me, that's not the bigger issue. I mean, it's a bigger issue to you, but it's not a big issue to the city. That's just something we're trying to streamline, and if we get the city ordinance, if we get the legal piece covered, and open it up, then to me, I'm not hung up on the week-to-week, call-to-call, and I don't know if y'all are either, it's just you're trying to streamline from our guidance. We told you, hey, let's do streamline, I mean, the guidance. So in my mind, that's just a, we can pick and choose that. So I would say, let's keep it at week-to-week, that's what I'm getting from most of y'all, and then we can, we'll vote on it, and if we have to amend it, we amend it at that time. But I think we got to get the city ordinance, Jim, that's the main piece, and we got to get all these other pieces in place, and see if we can figure out a way to justify to where, but we've got to open it up. So I kind of said that, everybody? Is that somewhat clear?
Okay, okay, clear as well, okay.
Okay, I do want to thank all y'all for coming, it's very helpful, we appreciate it, and I expect we'll see you again when we bring this up at our city council meeting.
Councilman, I would, just as we talked about before, it's not going to be the next council meeting, because we're going to need some time to prep this.
We've got work to do. Okay. So, anything else on your end on the towing record?
Yes, sir.
All right, last thing I'm going to do, I'm going to end this on a positive, I told you I was starting doing this. If y'all know Corporal William Mays, one of our great public safety chief, he completed the Supervisor Leadership Institute in Beaufort this week, and, and I know Corporal Mays helps Lieutenant Fittery with the Police Academy that Richard went to, so if you see Corporal Mays, congratulate him, and that's what's great about our public safety, they're trying to improve themselves. So Chief, you've got some great people there, and we thank for what you do. And the way I look at this thing is, it's taken us 25 years to get to this point, and if we need another study session, we're going to, we aren't going to rush it, we're going to do it the right way, and I think we've got a few things we can fine-tune, Pat, so we aren't going to rush it the next week. But I think we've got a, we got a basic template now, and then we can just, we'll just have to fine-tune and make some, maybe make a difficult decision when we vote, but that's why we got elected. Okay? With that, Jim, anything else on your end?
Just as a reminder, Mr. Mayor, that we will not, based on Kelly's advice, not be conducting an executive session this evening.
Yeah, there'll be no executive session, that's right.
I was going to remind everybody that the girls' air state championship game on Thursday night at USC Aiken.
It is at your second.
And I believe, what time is it starting?
Is it 5:00?
6:00.
And let me tell you one thing, go to GoFans, you cannot buy tickets at the gate, you need to go to GoFans, and that's a tough thing to get, so, and don't put GoFans, put South Carolina High School League in your info thing, that's how you find the date and time.
Go support them, it'll be an exciting game, I guarantee you.
All right, we stand adjourned, thank you.